Call the Athens School Board together please.
Call the Athens Grafton and Athens Grafton.
Alright, and...
I'll call the Grafton School Board to order. And now you can call the Athens Grafton to order.
Okay, so Athens Grafton is in order, Grafton is, and now I call the Athens School Board to order. And we're doing this, and we're going to run it so that if we need to break off, we can do that without having to stop and reopen, only because we have some very urgent stuff we need to talk about, and we may have to do it as separate boards, and therefore not having to go through the hoops, we will run open, okay? Alright, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, I hear yes.
The Chair would like to add, under seven, D approved corporate resolution. And that is for the, well, we can talk about it when we get there.
This is direct deposit business.
Yes, for direct deposit checks.
Alright, and that just has to be signed by Juneau?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
It has to approve that.
Yep.
Okay, any other adjustments? Okay?
We have a communication.
Can we, have you ever approved the minutes of last meeting?
Approved. I see a correction that needs to happen on page two, towards the bottom, the last part where Chris Pratt is talking, Dr. Carey's last name is misspelt.
Was it one R?
No, it was with a K, and instead of C-A-E-R-Y, it's K. That's it.
Alright, with that correction.
Approved.
Alright, most have been made, we approved the minutes of the last meeting. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the minutes of October 11th has been approved. Communication and public comments.
Hi, I'd like to speak now, yes. I was capable and able to bring in the dictionaries with the Grafton Grange, and so the third graders all got it, plus the missing students that didn't get it when they originally were in that grade, and if there's any other students that are missing a dictionary, all they've got to do is just let the principal know and I'll bring another one in, okay? And we'd like to thank very much for being invited in to get the dictionaries in.
Well, thank you for doing that, too. I mean, that's certainly great for our young people, that's neat.
Yeah.
And Liz will let you know if there's anybody who didn't get one.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay. So, I don't know if everyone's familiar who I am, I'm Amber Stevens. I'm here tonight to ask permission to cross the Athens School property, so I don't know if it's the Athens Board or Port Boards.
Athens Board.
The Grafton Snowville Club would like to change the Snowville Trail that we have right now, and go across the Athens School property. I have a map of where the trail would...
And this is right along Route 35, right? Up there by the power lines?
Yeah.
Can we even adjust the Athens School Board agendas that you're going to approve then?
That's, yeah.
Yeah, alright.
Thank you, Amber. So, this is the school here. Because right now it crosses down a little bit further towards the Y, and it's not a safe area to cross, so we're asking permission to use the land to cross on Snowville.
And you have already secured insurance, you said?
Yes.
So that is taking your...
I have an insurance binder from the VAST Office in Berry, that if you approve, you'd sign a landowner permission form, and it would protect you if anybody got hurt on your property, ran into the building, anything like that, they have a million dollar policy that protects you as a landlord. And I have all that here, and I have insurance binder to give you as well, if you approve.
Yep.
As a member of the public about Athens.
Yep.
Will this, do the Butters need to be notified as to the change here, and then it's not a problem, and is there any brush cutting or anything that needs to be done as part of the...
Mr. Gary would like us to do some brush cutting, because it has come back, it's grown in to the lawn area a little bit, and we told them that that would be able to be done for them. The entrance coming off the upper road, there's a lot of debris there that was left from the power company when they were doing the brush cutting there, so that stuff would just have to be moved over to the side, so we could come through. And then down towards the town hall, we would be crossing in front of the town hall, that slope there would have to have some brush removed, and just some modifications to make sure it's safe, nothing major.
You know, and I, while being in that kind of business...
And we would check with Tom and everything for all that stuff as well, so...
Yeah, so, we wouldn't be, I don't think we have to be terribly concerned about that, with that happening.
But he goes on in too, so...
Yeah, yeah, they've started then, I guess. Do you, either one of you have any questions?
The only question I have is, in future years, if we have to reopen it as a school, that wouldn't be used during school time, though.
On, you can put on the permission form any restrictions. I would like to come every year and ask permission to do this, so it's up to you if you accept us to come onto the land every year.
Yeah.
So, like, next year you decide to open it, you can say, no, the school's going to be open, you'll have to find another route around, and then we won't do that.
So, would it be wise for us just simply to do it as a one-year thing?
Yes.
Simply because with all that is happening with the schools, we may be opening up the school next year for something, and, so let's do it just as for this year?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, and then next year, Amber, you can go back and...
Yes.
Might be dealing with a different board, probably.
Maybe a whole different scenario, who knows?
Yeah, and if we go across town properties, we do the same thing in each town.
Yep.
At this town property, I recommend it's only one year, because lots of things change in a year, so...
Alright.
I don't know if you have to make a motion to sign this?
Yeah, what we'll do is, we'll make a motion to accept it, and then, and then what we'll do is, we'll have Lynn sign it, because you are the Secretary for the Athens Board.
Do I? I get to do something, why?
You can put that on the, they just need to make sure that it's on the agenda.
I'll make sure.
On the agenda.
Agree on the agenda, but actually there was no, I didn't see any real agenda for Athens, so...
So now you got one.
Yeah, I have one. So, alright, anybody want to make a motion that we...
I'll make the motion.
Alright, Charles makes the motion, Lynn seconds, that we accept and allow you to use, use that property, and we'll have Lynn fill that out and sign it for you, as our Secretary.
And I'll give you a copy of it and everything.
So I sign right here?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was Athens Grafton or just Athens, so it would be the Athens School Board, in Athens.
So Josh, this is a first half, or separate?
I can fill this out.
Yeah, this is an Athens business.
Here in the address.
Sorry.
And that would be the Athens School.
However you want to do it.
Yeah, well, but you could just put it on the public comments, but it's...
Yeah.
No reason why it's important, Athens will have to take their own...
Yeah, I keep those certificate of insurance, same...
What's that?
Yes. Do you want me to go back also and put just under adjustments?
Yeah, if we could.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Nope, that's awesome, Amber. On this one here, property owner's name Athens School District.
Could be the cross lot.
Yep. Okay, any other communications or public comments? Not hearing any reports. Lynn, you want to, you have a superintendent report?
So, if you look in your packet, you'll see that the superintendent, it's on this page, the superintendent has actually written you a kind of diary of everything he's done, so that you're all aware of what's, of what he's up to. So you could see that he's, he's done quite a bit. He had the emergency, emergency planning meeting, he had the central office meeting, he met with the NEA, with the union, to start the process of getting together how, what, how, and when they're going to begin their negotiations. And then he went to Landmark College to look at the opportunities for students on IEPs for dual enrollment, and...
I'm trying to find this.
Yeah, it should be in our packet.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, I'm just trying to get a little...
I do.
Alright, which comes, where does it all come on?
Yeah, pages four through six.
Yep, so, and then, we had the, we had a, let's see, the Secretary of Education, Dan French, went to Westminster School, while the Deputy to the Secretary came to the high school to visit, so they actually came and, Dan French went to Westminster, Heather Boucher, the Deputy Secretary, went to the Bell's College Union High School. I was at the high school with her, she went on a tour, asked some really great questions, we talked about flexible pathways and things that they were trying to do at the, at the high school, and of course, the Secretary was with the superintendent at Westminster.
We'll be hearing more about this the last meeting.
Um, yeah, I think...
I kind of like to...
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a, a kind of tour of the school, and they, it's called capital for the day, or moving the capital around the counties, so they, everybody in the, the agency, not just the Agency of Education, but all the agencies, they came to different counties, and they picked different places to go, so the fire department, there was one pimped in this county, one elementary school, one high school, and, you know, I'm sure they went to some town hall, or, they, all those people who work at the, up in Mount Pilure, they all came, it was part of what the governor was trying to, capital for the day initiative, so that they moved around the state. The superintendent was in a play, the one that we had, I think it was last weekend, at the high school, he had a walking on part, I think he was a police or detective, police officer or detective, and he had one line, like, you're under arrest, and it was very successful.
So he didn't mess it up?
No, he didn't.
He couldn't be.
It was very, the high school principal was in it as well. So we had our tech boot-up day, which was exciting, that was, there was no school that day, but all of the staff and the secretarial staff, we went to the high school, the middle school, and we all had, we took classes, there were four sessions, and every one had a Google survey, and they picked the four classes they wanted. One of my classes was called Canva, and it's just a really easy-to-use tool that you can make great banners, programs, brochures, announcements, with all the graphics you can imagine, limitless, limitless. There were Google Docs, Google Sheets, many of the programs that we use, Khan Academy, so there were, there were learning, you know, lessons on how to teach different classes, or how to engage your own self in, in learning higher, and, you know, refining your skills using these, definitely interactive boards, many, many classes, and it was a huge success. And we did provide lunch, which was delicious, our food, food to farm-to-food cafe services, we had some incredible butternut squash soup, pizza, and salad. The administrative assistants had their own sessions, and that was good to get them together from all the different schools, because they're always in touch with each other, and the whole idea that we're trying to do is have more consistency in our practices across the district, so that was really great. And, let's see, yeah, then the bad news, on the 29th, the Board of Education decided to go against the alternate proposal, alternative proposal, as well as the Secretary recommending, recommendation to not, not to merge. This is a preliminary decision to merge Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. The final decision will be expected by the end of November. It is, Chris is understanding that even though these are preliminary decisions, they do not plan to alter any changes, or any changes to be made, so, and then, Chris met with the school nurses.
Alright.
But, yes, we do expect by November 30th them to tell us, this is it.
But we'll be discussing that a little bit later.
Yes, we will.
Well, I guess we will.
So, my, my report is about the Wellness Committee and the hard work they've done. We're working together, we wrote a grant for $15,000, there's only seven in the state, for our farm-to-school, scratch cooking, our oven and our stove top is 49 years old, when you open, the blower's always on, so when you open the oven doors, there's a blast of hot air that comes at you, and it probably takes an hour to boil a thing of water, so we need to do that. We're having some Title I literacy intervention training for the interventionists, some special education teachers, and we're having that at Saxon's River, and Liz is coming, as well as two of her teachers, to help understand, you know, to help them understand where the reading is breaking down with our youngest struggling learners, and, and there's a little kind of science to figuring it out, and, and we're working on that, and...
Is running records a, a name of a product, or is it just, just good?
It's a practice.
Okay.
It's not about programs, it's about practices.
I was just looking at the capitalization, I didn't know if we were being German, or if this was a specific kind of program.
Yeah, no, we call it running records, and, the reason why it's capitalized is because it's, I guess it's kind of a copyrighted kind of technique of taking every word, the student, and understanding when they make a mistake. Are they cueing themselves to correct it, or are they looking at the picture and making the wrong assumption, are they, you know, sometimes they just look at the shape of the word without reading it?
Just wanted to know if it was a thing, or if it was just...
No, no, but it's not. So, again, and then Ms. Wilkins is putting together her ELA committee, to align it with the Common Core standards. There's a $20,000 homeless grant that was submitted, those are for, to help us support folks that, for a variety of reasons, that are not able to, to live in their own home. Special education is talking about their service plan, they have to present one to the AOE, and they're working on, it's called Futures, and what it is, is it's going to be essentially an audit of our special education program, to make sure that we are serving the students the best way we can, the most efficient way, and the most cost-efficient way as well.
Yeah.
But making sure every child gets what they need.
Given, even though 173 or whatever, it's a really top-of-mind issue.
Well, I, and I agree. So EDI is working on that conversion to the unified Uniform Chart of Accounts, and they want to convert ADS into the new e-finance software, and it is, it's, it's a monstrous task, and so I really credit EDI with doing some heavy-duty work.
Well, I have a staff that has been working hours and hours on this, it's, it's going to take all five of us to get this done.
And it's kind of a tough time of year because of budgeting, and, it's, it's a big, big, big undertaking. So Harley is wonderful, and he is our, our school nutrition program, and he's had some exciting two months. They are local sourcing and scratch cooking as much as they can, and at this point, he did write in that we're writing a grant, but I do want to point out that Liz here is relentless in looking for grants, and she's going to get a grant...
Yeah, right.
For our gardens and our food, for our children's curriculum with wellness and nutrition, and, so there is a plan for Athens, Grafton Elementary School to, to begin work on a grant in the spring.
Can I just ask Liz a question? How is it, this new program going here, as far as the school lunches and things like that?
Oh, it's great.
Is it great? Kids, kids, all the kids participating in the breakfast and things like that?
Yeah, the breakfasts are grab and go, grab and go, and most kids take it, probably at least 60% of our students, at least, if not more. The lunch has been brought out, so the breakfast is brought out, lunch is brought out, it's been, most of our students participate in lunch and breakfast.
Good, okay. I just, I just want to know if our kids are accepting it or...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Good, superb.
That brings up two questions. This program is new for us this year, and it's, so, we, we, when we made a budget decision at, at the SU level, it really was involved, you know, throwing, throwing something at the wall and hoping it was accurate, and I'm wondering if we have any ideas to relative adoption rate, in terms of, you know, how many kids are using this year as opposed to last, and I don't know if that information's easy to come by, thank you.
I think Harley might, yeah, I'd have to ask.
Well, it would be very useful to get some hard numbers. We did ask for them earlier, because it was way too early, but now we're coming into, now that we're into November, at least we've got, you know, we've got a couple months under our belt, and we should be able to tell, because that's, has real budgetary implications, because we didn't know which side of $100,000 on either side we were when we, when we set the budget for that, and we're kind of hopeingly overestimating.
Now, that might be a little skewed, though, because of the, the number of students we had last year as opposed to the number of students we have this year.
All that, but just, the idea is, percentage, I'm looking at percentage uptake, simply because, you know, getting those numbers, it has real budgetary implications for both us and for the SQ as a whole, so...
Subjectively, it's going great at home.
Yep.
So we're hearing good things, are we?
Good, good.
That's good to know.
I can say that participation is up in all our buildings.
Wonderful.
I'm sure I can spell the truth even now.
Shauna's got all that, because she submits the claims, but I know that all the schools are up as far as the student participation, and we're getting a lot more of the adult seating, too, which has been great.
Good. I'm, I'm just so happy to hear it, because I, you know, I loved it when they presented the video and all that stuff, and I was so excited about it.
The food looked awesome.
So I just, you know, I just want to see this thing work so well.
And you're more than welcome to come, it's at 11:30 and 12:00 lunch every day.
Got it.
Yep.
I may show up?
Ricky's...
Yep, so Ricky's talked about the great success of our boot camp, and he's talking again about his Student Center Chromebook Repair Program in the middle school, where the students, he has certain students, especially students that have a little bit of trouble with keeping their Chromebook in top-running condition, so they're teaching them how to repair them, and so that's very good hands-on. And then we're looking at a Title IV grant, which will help, the Title IV comes under the Consolidated Federal Grant, and I'm, we're about this close to getting it approved, there's one last person, but the Title IV request for subscription services for all the schools across the district, again, we're trying to pull us all kind of, have the same opportunities for every child, has been approved for subscriptions like IXL, which is a great math program, the kids can use it at home, they can use it in summer school, after school, in the classroom as a station, practice, and also as a, an intervention. So we're looking for that, and then we are also looking to get more Chromebooks in the high school, because most of our schools are now one-to-one, but middle school's one-to-one, but the high school's not, and so we need to catch up on that piece, so, that's how we are right now, that's the report.
Good.
Any questions?
Two. One is, it's been made fairly clear to me that a lot of people, including surprisingly me, know less about the Google Docs system than we ought to, and we had talked at the high school about having a dedicated training, and whether that happens as part of our semi-annual meeting, or it's done at individual board levels, it really is a high priority to do, because we are, we've made such a commitment to having this material be online as opposed to handouts, that we really need to get up to speed, so that we can be effectively utilizing that system. I don't care which way we do it, but we really, you know, this is something that can't go on to the next year.
Definitely, and I'll bring that forward, I'm also on the technology committee, and we meet, we meet once a month, but I'll bring it forward to Chris...
Yeah.
And Ricky, and see what we can do, even if we do just a quick demonstration at the joint boards meeting.
Yeah, I just think that I would rather spend the time making sure everybody actually walks away knowing how to do it, than, you know, anything, quick versus effective, in this case, I'm, we, I would recommend strongly effective.
Um, I'm available to help with that.
Well, you know, I, because I'm, I'm still illiterate.
Because that's what I do. Also, about the one-to-one, is there, we're talking about the high school, are they going to just do Chromebooks, or be thought about MacBooks instead?
We can't...
Okay, well, the long one, it shows that MacBooks stay and have more lasting, while Chromebooks are more disposable.
Right, but, but there's also kind of a, a cycle with the supplier, so when they age out, we kind of get new ones, and they're about 300 apiece, and, but there is, they're very effective for what the, the students need. They're not doing a lot of graphics, they're actually using them a lot to do research and write papers, and understand what is a quality website and what is not, and those kinds of things, but, yeah, MacBooks would be out of, our teachers and our staff had MacBooks, but they would be out of the range of our students, but I know, I know what you're saying.
Because my school, we're one-to-one with MacBook, and we were given the option for Chromebooks, but when we did the comparison, we opted for the MacBooks, and our students have had great success with them, and using everything for them, so...
If graphics ever comes up, I'd be happy to show people, including staff, how to use GIMP and Photo Filter, which are the two free versions of, so you're not spending $500 per license, and it has everything in it that, that the fancy high-priced stuff does, and be happy to want people through that.
That's why the Google Docs and the Google Sheets and the Google Charts and all of that is so, is so popular, because it's all free.
Yeah, and it's groupware, so people can collaborate.
Yep. Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks, Liz.
Yeah, thanks for the report. So right now we have 59 students at the elementary school, we got two new students in this week, a kindergarten or first grader, so now we have 30 Athens students, 29 Grafton students, still 36 seventh and eighth graders, 18 and 18, 22% special ed here at the school, 12% 504, and 20% are on EST plan. School news, October was Fire Safety Month, we welcomed two members of our Grafton Fire Department, Rob Halleck and Robbie Sprague, to present to the school the importance of fire safety, they were also here during an evacuation drill, and they brought in their truck with all the lights going, so it was fantastic. Another fire safety initiative was the Pillow Case, Pillow Case Project, put on by the American Red Cross. They stress the importance of smoke alarms, exiting your home quickly, and establishing a common meeting place with your family, like was just said, the SUI Tech Day, teachers were able to choose up to four different courses to take throughout the day and learn a variety of tools to bring back to the classroom and embed in their instruction. We held our annual Halloween parade last week, which is a big success.
That was great.
Yeah, students dressed up in costume, prayed around town, they loved showing their costumes, and the PTG put on a fantastic mac and cheese dinner that evening.
I didn't know about mac and cheese, I didn't eat for that.
Well, we're gearing, we're gearing up for our Thanksgiving feast, which will be the Tuesday before Thanksgiving at 12:30. If you'd like to help, especially to serve, I'm not 12:30, 11:30, thank you, if you, especially if you would like to help serve the meal, because what happens is the staff and the parents are usually serving, and so the kids don't have anyone to sit, are sitting alone, so if you are available that day, or if you'd like to help in any way, please let me know, I have a number of a person on PTG who will be...
You'll send me a prompt, I'll be...
Okay. The 20th, yep. Also, our holiday bazaar is coming up, which is going to be on December 13th, that's where, if you send in any white elephant-type things you have lying around your house, we set it all up, and it's either 25, 50, or 75 cents, and kids can go shopping for their families. What we would love is if anybody is available to help wrap, because then we wrap it all up for the kids. Because then we wrap it all up for the kid, and they go home with all their Christmas gifts wrapped for their family. If you have any wrapping paper donations, tape donations, labeling donations, anything like that we could use. Or if you are a fantastic wrapper and you would like to help wrap gifts, we could also use your help with that.
What day was that?
The thirteenth, December thirteenth. We will start taking donations for it, starting the twentieth, November twentieth. So right at Thanksgiving, we'll take donations, and then the actual bazaar is on the thirteenth.
These are big gifts for.
Their families.
For the family?
Right, so kids are shopping for their parents.
For the family.
Often they re-buy what you try to get out of your house.
I was wondering where that went.
I needed that to get.
I, I do remember buying most of my order of that.
Dad, you need slippers. Can I have some money?
Yeah, would you like a water update to?
Well, you've, you've already shared.
I shared the documents, so that's sufficient. Okay, that's totally fine.
I would think so, unless somebody else has.
Okay, I mean, I guess the biggest thing is that it will be financed by the state.
Yep.
Going moving forward, so.
And everything's good with it.
Yeah, the point-of-view system is functioning.
Yep.
Uh, I just want to say how grateful I am for these text reports. I, I sometimes have trouble with, you know, audio presentations, taking all the notes, remembering everything. And when you have it in text, it really does help. This is a change from past practice. It's an improvement.
And I added that. That is, it is good. Thank you. Okay, Edie.
All right, nothing new going on in Athens. Everything is moving along well. And Liz is keeping, um, a close eye, eye on the budget. Thank you. And in Athens, um, for seven and eight tuition, we budgeted three hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, without any changes currently, we're looking at three hundred and eighteen thousand in expenses. So we may end up three thousand, um, dollar deficit. Um, in Grafton, um, we budgeted two hundred and eighty-five thousand. And if there are no changes, we're expecting the cost to be two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars. So they will end up with almost a thirty-five thousand dollar surplus.
So we'll, we'll be calling on you guys for a loan.
We make a loan.
There you go, there you go. So, um, and it's hit or miss. I mean, families move a lot more than they used to. And so, yeah, I'll keep you posted if there's any other changes, but that's the way it looks right now.
Yep.
Should we just, on the reports, sort of ex post facto, uh, throw on just a quick summary of Budget Committee? Because I know June wasn't here, and I don't know, June the only one that wasn't here before the.
Yeah, and I had talked to June in between.
Just, just that there's a, that we're looking at a, a drop of one F T E is probably the biggest news. And, uh, and obviously the, this, the attendance numbers, which we've already covered.
Yeah, the attendance numbers, plus we don't have the numbers because of negotiations coming up and things of that. So, uh, these are just, our budget meeting tonight was, was pretty much just kind of preliminary because we don't have a lot of the numbers yet.
And we did ask, just to make, just confirm that the small schools grant won't be affected by.
Right, and I will check with Brad. I'll try to catch him tomorrow. If not, I will, um, drop him a line on Monday, and he will, uh, he's good about getting that to me, so.
All right, any questions, Edie? All right, number six, unfinished business for discussion? Any things that we have not covered? All right, not hearing any. New business, approval of fund money expenditures.
Okay, um, the only thing that you have, um, for additional funds, some of the schools had, um, either fundraised years ago or had donations years ago. And the auditors are asking us to get, clean up these, all these little thousand-dollar accounts or two thousand-dollar accounts. The only thing really that you have in Athens, Grafton, is three thousand sixty-four dollars in E-rate, which has to be used for, um, technology. But other than that, you don't have any other, um, little funds that have been sitting around for twenty or thirty years, so.
So do we need to take action as to open that up for you guys to use for technology?
Um, Liz and Gary can work out how they want to spend it. The only thing is, it's actually reimbursement of last year on our, um, internet costs. And they're phasing out like the phones. They used to reimburse us, um, on the phones. But they're phasing that out. But, um, so this is money that we receive based on last year's cost. And it's to enhance, um, technology for, uh, students. So, uh, Liz and Gary can figure out what they need, and, um, yeah, please, please use that.
So this has nothing to do with, for example, for Athens, the Harrison Fund that we have for kids for books? Because that's, that's more of a town thing, isn't it?
That's a town thing.
That's a town thing.
Yeah, but what we found is, um, in Rockingham, there were several small accounts that, um, I don't know how Christine researched that, because I had researched it when I came, and I just kept hitting a wall. But she managed to find out who donated it and an idea of what they donated it for. But the auditors are like, you know, you've got five or six of these little, little donation accounts that are just sitting there, um, clean them up, so.
Okay.
A question that Edie. A lot of times, these types of grants, especially private ones.
Yes.
Are, have, have some sort of constraint on them?
Yes, and we do have to follow that.
I was going to say, I just want to make sure that we're honoring that stuff.
Absolutely, we cannot, if someone gives it for, let's say, technology or enrichment, we have to follow their wishes. We can't then turn around and go out and buy playground equipment with it, yeah.
Some have geographic delimiters too, because I'm, especially the old ones too. I just want to make sure that we are, you know, we, especially as we're, as we're going forward, this stuff's going to get tricky, and I just want to make.
Yeah, no, um, like at the high school, they have scholarship funds. And no, we have to by law follow the intent of what the money was given for. Um, so, yeah, I make sure.
Yeah, because the auditors pick right up on that, wouldn't they?
Oh, yeah, they would.
If we have any, if there's geographics on the Athens, on the, is E-rate?
E-rate, actually, um, we get, um, all the money back together. But based on our invoices that they've reimbursed us, we're able to break it down by school. And so this reflects what Athens, Grafton has generated in internet costs. And, and, um, so, yeah, this is all of Athens, Grafton money. No one else's money is mixed in.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is now, the next topic is the B. Um, discussion of the Vermont State Board of Education decision to merge Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. Everybody see the article that David wrote in the paper?
No.
Called the Act Forty-Six Endgame, Disempower Our Local Communities. I tore it out so you can read it if you need to. Lynn, do you have any, I know you're administration, so you probably can't give us a whole lot of insight in this, but.
Well, I can tell you, and I'm not sure how many people know what the, what is, is going to happen. But essentially, when they tell us, uh, if they tell us at the end of November that we don't have any recourse, this is what we're doing, then we can, then we have sixty days. Sixty days for a new board to form called the Transitional Board. That includes the Chair of Athens, the Chair of Grafton, and the Chair of Westminster, the Clerk of Athens, the Clerk of Grafton, and the Clerk of Westminster. That will be our new transitional board. Within ninety days, they have to work together to come up with a budget for the three schools. And at that point, um, during, uh, town meeting time, a new board will be formed, two from Athens, two from Grafton, and two from Westminster. And then they will make, uh, the movements towards, uh, procuring the buildings, buying the buildings for the new district, which, um, as we talked earlier, is going to be complex. We don't even know what the new district's going to be named, uh, but these things will happen. And, um, I can tell you, because it's public knowledge, at the Westminster meeting Tuesday night, there was a lot of discussion, uh, certainly about how everyone voted no. They didn't want this, and still we have it. We went through everything we were asked with the alternative proposal. And they, they still didn't accept it. So this idea of being forced, uh, and forced to sell our buildings and forced to, uh, to do this, there is a group of five attorneys that are doing this pro bono. We know of three, who, three, one of them was present at the meeting.
Is Davy Kelly, was he there or was it Mark Ottenher?
No, it was Isla.
Okay, I don't, I don't know who that is, but I don't know the name.
Um, I, I don't, I should have brought my notes, and I would have told you. But anyway, she was with the Chair of the Dumberston School Board. They have joined the, uh, case along with about twenty-one other school districts. So, um, they, the school board, after much discussion, agreed, the Westminster School Board agreed to join the, uh, the legal case, uh, to, uh, to fight this. And it is pro bono. There is some donation pages, you know. Also, uh, they really didn't want to talk about which strategy they were using. But people in the audience, they had every, every strategy that you could think of, you know, about how this is illegal.
Yeah, now, just one other question, uh, in the Westminster thing, and if it's public knowledge, then you can give it to me. Um, did they also decide as far as what to do with the, um, paying the dues for the Vermont School Board Association?
They're not, they're choosing not to pay the dues.
Okay, I just wanted, I just, because I think that's going to help us in our decisions, um, in, in lieu of this.
David Clark did mention something about, um.
Using for legal funds?
There is, they can't use school funds for legal funds. But there is an alternative, um, school board, uh, association, alliance.
The Alliance Vermont School Board members, which many of you are probably sort of familiar with. If, if you, with your indulgence, I was at the S P E meeting.
Yep.
Have that enjoyable experience. The state, the, the Agency of Education had, had chosen, and they worded this rather carefully, uh, that they had centrally recommended no action be taken, which is not the same thing as, uh, as validating our alternative governance. But it sound, but the, our understanding up until the Board of Ed had met was that, in effect, it meant that they would accept our alternative governance, but expect Athens and Grafton to get it together and figure out what they wanted to do.
And that was, and that was per, that was what the commissioner wanted to do, right?
That was, that, I, I, I got that, I got that from Dan French one-on-one previously, uh, in my conversation with him. So we, uh, so everybody, we all thought that was what was going on.
Right, right.
The, the S B A wobbied the, the S P E. To what effect and to what, I don't know. But I do know that after their discussions with them, ex parte, we found ourselves suddenly being forcibly merged. Um, you know, Dave and I have some suspicion that maybe this was not entirely a, a, an objective decision. But.
Well, you guys already got like five minutes, didn't you?
We had five minutes.
Five minutes at the meeting and all that?
Literally thought, we, we literally thought that we were just there to ratify, uh, the agreement. And we're, we're quite astonished to find out that in fact we were going quite the opposite direction. Um, the thing that was really fascinating about this from a legal perspective, and this is just a small point, not, not prejudicing, uh, whatever the, uh, whatever council decides. But it's really important when you have a regulatory action, that the regulatory action be the least burdensome possible. And they decided it wasn't any burden at all to us, based on what, I have no idea. Uh, they also are supposed to discuss what rule they're using to guide their decision.
And they didn't give us.
They don't, they didn't give us one. They said, well, it's in, it's in our discussions. Well, there is nothing in the discussions that touches on this whatsoever. Which, due process, there's some issues here. Whether this is a state or federal issue, I don't know. And then there's the obvious one, that if there was any efficiencies to be drawn from this, and it's hard to, they couldn't articulate any, uh, because we asked. And, uh, if there were any to be done, there is a constitutional guarantee in the state of Vermont about that your access to education should be convenient to people. And this will be the most gerrymandered district in the state of Vermont. Because literally, if you wanted to send kids to programs in part of our district, both Athens and Grafton can't get there directly, they would literally have to go out of the consolidated district into Rockingham's district and then drive back into the district. And that's, you know, any, if gerrymandering counts, and it usually does, this is the sort of thing that is usually brought up as, as, as part of the case. Whether or not our, whether or not, uh, I shouldn't say our, because we haven't decided, our, uh, whether or not the, uh, whether or not legal representatives think this is the key point on this or not, I cannot tell you. But it certainly is something that we should consider when we decide what we want to do. The, the other thing that's important, because I spent time on this, was acquiescence is important in these types of regulatory, uh, situations. And the way that they are proceeding is they are assuming that the, that the Chair and that the Clerk will willingly walk away from the rest of their boards and willingly come to this organizational meeting. And maybe that we want to do that, or maybe we want to say, you and what army is going to make us? Uh, and, and this is really important because I'm not sure what legal basis they would have to compel the, uh, the, uh, Clerk and the Chairs of the local boards to attend any damn meeting at all. Uh, but that is, that is the key. And it's, it's really important, because if you show up, you're saying that this consolid.
We agree with them.
That we have essentially given them permission.
Yep.
And maybe we want to give them permission, or maybe we want to tell them very rude things.
Now, if, now, if we decide tonight, Jack, to go the legal route, as Westminster did, for example, in the other, then that basically is saying to them, we're not going to come to this stupid meeting.
Well, it's a separate path. You know, one of the things, uh, that, and I, I'll share with you a discussion I had with Ed Bank, who's absent because of family issues. There, there really are two tracks. You can fight it. And then there's the, which, you know, I'm, I'm, maybe you're making an assumption that that's what we're going to decide. And then there are the things that we will, you know, there may be some minimal things that have to get done to make, make sure there's a budget, uh, to make sure that there, you know, that there's continuity. And it may mean that we continue to meet as our separate boards to get the work done and figure it out later. But that's, that is a, something we haven't, I don't think anybody's really figured out yet. I, I, and I do think that the way the proposed, uh, forcible merger takes place, your board chair and your clerk of, you know, of the two, of the two school districts don't have to get anybody's permission. They can just show up. So, you know, we can't even really give them guidance as to whether they. So, you know, we can't even really give them guidance as to whether they show up or not. They can, that's something that, to some extent, it's their independent call. Sorry, but there you are. You know, I, I know that it was verbalized, since it was kind of my idea, that if boards chose not to, not to convene, you know, if these individuals chose not to convene, it would, we thought it might be interesting to have the, have the state board articulate by what legislation they could force these people to meet, because there didn't seem to be any. So there you are. That's, you know.
All right. So I know that last year, there was a vote taken for this Act forty-six. And I'm guessing, because I cannot remember exactly the figures, but it seems to me that in Athens itself, about ninety-five percent of the people voted no.
It might have been, but it was pretty close.
I know that here in Grafton, it was about eighty percent said no. To me, as elected official, I'm obligated, I think, to follow what the people say. And the people in my town said no. And my golly, you know, that's, that's how I'm leaning. And, and, you know, because I think that that's, that's my, my duty as a school board elected official, to go with what the people say. And be honest with you, as a citizen, I would do that anyway, because you're not going to tell me what to do. And that's what they want to do. And, you know.
I have a question on this.
Go ahead.
May have already been answered, but do, does the state have any legal right to tell us that we have to merge?
Well, Ed, I mean, Ed, I'm sorry. What's your name? Jack?
Hi, I'm Jack.
Hi, Jack. He was just sharing with us that, you know, that there's no, there's nothing there.
Well, it's a ca, it would be a case.
Again, the, the legal, I can't anticipate what the legal arguments will be, and I actually think it would be inappropriate to try. I do know that there's a lot of contending bits and pieces here. One of which is that constitutional right to access to education, which will be argued against by the state, that saying that we're just changing governance, that doesn't affect anything. We know that's nonsense, but that's, that's going to be the argument. And that's why I articulated the issues about, is it onerous? Is it the least restrictive alternative? And that one might be much more important. The fact that they are essentially stating that this shall happen, but based on nothing that I know of, except that somebody drafted up a set of proposals that don't have the force of anything behind them, is a question. Do you have to bear in mind that by statute, by constitutional provision, that all school districts are creatures of the state? So the state can adjust boundaries, can adjust governance structures as they see fit. Whether or not that means that the legislature has to approve consolidation plans by vote, as opposed to dumping it off to the state board of education, is a legitimate question. But I don't know, I, that's, that's above my pay grade. It probably will be an issue that will be explored, but that, that's where it's at. Essentially, the, the SBE is saying that by the provisions of Act forty-six, that they have been delegated the sole determinant power, and they can do any damn thing they want.
See, I guess, Charles, also, my question to go along with yours is this, is does an appointed board have authority over the elected board of the people? And it just seems to me that the elected board of the people would have the authority. At least, I'm sure that that's going to be one of the arguments in this.
It doesn't sound to me like they have a leg to stand on.
Well, they, they actually do.
Might be a peg leg, but they got a leg.
Effectively, what they are doing is they're dissolving the districts of Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. They will be legally dissolved. They will therefore, in theory, if you take the state's argument, they will have no legal standing to complain. They have been dissolved, just as if you were a insolvent corporation that was dissolved by, by court order. Now, there is no court order here, which is an issue. There, and, you know, the due process aspect of all this, normally when corporate, corporations are sovereign enough that there has to be due process. Again, not my, not my call as to where, where that takes, takes us, and whether or not that's a, an issue that state or, and I think more importantly, federal courts will recognize. I get nothing.
Yep.
But essentially, what they're telling you is that at the end of the month, you're out of business.
Yeah.
Is there anything like it? Is there anything, has there been anything like this? Okay, case similar. I, I'd love to hear.
I, I just wanted to answer Charles's question. And the only reason why, I, I knew this anyway when it came up to can they force testing on our students, you know, statewide testing. We, this is what Chris said in Westminster when that question came up. It's a good question. We rely on, particularly because of our poverty status, we rely on federal funds, grant funds for a lot of things. We get, oh, three thousand, three million, I'm sorry, dollars across the district in grant funding, so it pays for a lot of extras.
So they're holding purse strings on that?
They could. They could deny us, because the federal government gives the money to the state, and the state is very tight in how we use it. There's so many parameters. But they could also pull the plug and say, you're not following the law or doing what we have mandated, such as testing, you know, that formative, not the summative testing that everyone takes. It used to be the kneecap, and now it's us back. We didn't have a choice. They forced it. If we said no, they, they could have pulled our, our federal funds. There's, that's similar.
Yeah. There is also the fact that the state is making the argument, and Chris Kibby talked about this in an earlier meeting. The state makes the argument that there is no such thing, really, as sovereign municipalities, that all the mon, that since, actually before Act forty-six, since the Brigham case and all the consolidation that took place then, that essentially all monies go to the state. And therefore, it's the state's schools, they can do whatever they wish. And therefore, and that that money is essentially allocated back to, to, to the individual districts with some discretionary power. And that is an argument that might actually be a good argument. Because it may mean that if we don't have a school district, we don't have any money to pay anybody. I, you won't know, we won't know any of this until we put it to the acid test, and there you are.
Well, then we better be figuring how to build a road from Athens over to Westminster.
I did propose to John Carroll that as part of the consolidation, I wanted a four-lane or to go across Putney Mountain Road around Athens.
Two-lane or be fine. We don't need no four-lane highways out there.
Yeah.
See, our problem is, is out in Athens, we would hit Westminster West, but not Westminster itself, you know, so. Anyway.
We gotta go over two ranges.
Huh?
We gotta go over two.
We gotta go over two ranges, yeah. Yeah.
We do have people in the audience here, that's small though it may be. And I don't know if this is anything that either of you, because, you know, we're, we're flying a little bit blind, you know. We're, we don't have a chance to have a, this is going to happen so fast, we really wouldn't have a chance to organize a, town meetings to ask advice to the community as to what to do. We're, we're trying to be guided by our prior votes. But if, you know, people, you know, have feedback, and that goes to the broader community, if you have feedback, we really would like to know, because we're, this is your school, or at least we think it is. And this, you know, we are your board, at least for a while. And if you're, if there are things that you would like, if there's views that you have about how we should go forward with this, I think we'd all find that instructive. And I, I mean it very sincerely.
I appreciate that, Jack, for opening up to anybody. If you just have a, you know, a brief comment to give to us. Darling, you had one.
Yes. I'm very glad that I don't have any children to go to school right now. But with all the traffic and the tra, the problems that are going on with transportation, we have a lot of snow in Athens, and I believe there's snow that goes all the way over to other schools. And I believe that if I was to have children at my house right now, I would be homeschooling them. I would not be putting up with what's going on.
Okay.
How do you want them to contact you? Do you have a phone number? Do you want letters? Do you, what do you want, emails?
My, you know, I can just speak for myself, and people can, you know, speak in order. My phone number is eight four three two seven three five. I do answer my phone. You can also send me, since this is school business, you should use the school board address for me, and that is jackbryer, B-R-Y-A-R, at W N E S U dot com, which is weird, but it's W N E S U dot com. And, you know, or you can just drop by the house, knock on the door and say, are you busy? So that would be fine.
Yep. And I think probably most of us, you know, would say the same. Please contact us.
But if you guys, yeah, maybe go around and people, you know.
I mean, if you need my, need our numbers, we'll give them to you, or addresses, or whatever.
Is there any chance you could have something typed up that I could actually be able to, like, hand out when people come into the town office?
Yes, do you have everybody's number on the board?
I do. A lot of things I'm hearing, everybody's concerned what's going to happen to individual schools, as ownership.
May I speak to this?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
The, the one thing I, I understand is that nothing will happen to any school for at least two years. So the idea of Athens, Grafton closing will not happen immedi, that's not something that will happen. It'll be two years before that even becomes a question. But the, the reality is Westminster's too far to move, to move these kids.
So can I ask a few questions? Excuse the ignorance. So it's, it's assumed that it would be, go to Westminster? That's what I read in the, okay, so that's not even a no. So I'm just really que, I want to be thirty thousand feet above and, and look, and understand this better.
The, the way this works is, the only part that this really affects technically is governance.
School boards.
Okay.
It's strictly school boards. Now, having said that, the proposed, the proposed governance structure is Rube Goldberg-esque. You'll recall that when we went through this proposed consolidation, that it was going to be this thing where, where each town would be allocated two residents that would be eligible to participate in the governance. Now, there'd be two board members from each town. However, the voting would be at large. This is, this was a big concern, because it would mean that, you know, the hundred and fifty voters of, of Athens would have their vote on the represent, representative from Athens, but so would the several thousand folks from, from Rockingham and back then Westminster, which made it sound kind of like a mockery. That is in the proposed Articles of Governance. They're not, that you may choose to do something else, but you would either have to divide districts, which would essentially be all of Athens, Grafton, and part of Westminster, and then a district, then Westminster and Westminster. Or you could have, or you could have this structure. Now, we thought it felt very fraudulent when, when this was brought up before. But that's how the governance would be affected.
So just saying is, everybody who was running for school board would be on one ballot?
Yes.
In all the towns?
Yes.
So that therefore, if somebody from Athens did not get enough votes, Athens would not be represented on the school board.
Well, what it would mean is, if there was an Athens representative who is running, and this is, you know, one of the ways you solve this, you only have two people running, but that's not really democratic. The, but it would mean, say, say June and Ed and I and Pam all ran for those two positions.
Yeah.
And we all, and everybody voted for Pam and June from Grafton. Isn't it popular people, right? And, and, but Ed and I might be better known in Rockingham, or not, in this case Westminster. If enough people from Westminster voted us out.
For you guys.
Too bad for you guys. And that's what would happen. So that's, that's, that's the issue with the system. The theory is that people would be on the honor system and not vote for people outside their towns. And that's a very curious theory. But there you go. That's how.
So why have them on the, on the full ballot, then?
Well, it, it, you know, this is, this is part of it. The more important part from your community's perspective
Yeah.
is that we now have, and we spent a lot of time with this. We have three, we have the Grafton School District, we have the Athens School District, we have the Westminster School District. Your taxing is based on a district basis. Now, the Athens and Grafton are essentially the same, but it's still divvied up by, by population and by the number of students. And for Athens, it's kind of a bit of a raw deal, to some extent, in the sense that you have more kids.
Right.
And you have a smaller tax base, and you notice it when you open up your bill if you're not, if you're not a one forty, H one forty-four person. In this case, we would be merging those two things, which sounds good, but we'd also be merging it with Westminster, which is probably the most expensive district per capita in, in the state, outside of Chitting County. So you will see, you know, when it comes to approving that budget, there'll be our little votes, and there'll be their other large votes. So you, you will, if the budgets that we see right now are truly consolidated, if our, if last year's budget was consolidated, and the tax bill was allocated evenly, Athens and Grafton would see a fairly, particularly Grafton, would see a fairly noticeable fiscal hit. You know, about twenty cents, I think we figured it out as the other day. It might be a lot more than that, but that was kind of the number we were working off of. So that's the gift we would be giving as part, as our, you know, as our share for participating in this. You know.
I mean, I would anticipate Athens would be hit even harder.
Well, not necessarily, because you're, you are, you are land poor, student rich relatively. So you, you're, you, you might be a little bit, the, the hit might be narrower. It still would be a hit, because the dollar spent per pupil would be higher. And, and that's, that's an issue. But that, but, you know, I just want to try to, am I doing this, I get this right, right, so far?
Yeah. I, I can just tell, I can repeat what was said at Tuesday's meeting. As you know, Westminster is paying off a bond.
Right.
So they're roughly a dollar sixty per hundred. Athens and Grafton is roughly a dollar twenty per hundred.
That's a forty cent difference right there.
So that's...
And now, if we were to do this, we would adopt some of their bond?
That I'm not sure.
Yes.
I think we will.
You would have one budget, one tax.
You own all their debt in this. They own all your buildings.
Yeah, see, that's, once again, I mean, we would, once again, have that, have that upon us, and...
Yeah, one budget, one tax.
We sure as dudes think, I don't want to, you know, we kind of...
Oh, no, 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 sure. Well, I just, I, I, I want to really, again, just look at all the angles. I want to leave no stone unturned before we decide what we're going to do, right? So if I'm hearing correctly, it's, we would be faced with a shift in how the board is structured. We would be faced with a shift in tax, tax bill, tax rate for community members. So I, I, I want, I want to just under, I want whoever's a part of this to really understand how we would be impacted. And then, of course, let us never forget the children. And Lynn, I'd love for you to talk more about the long-term impact for the children themselves, administrators, teachers, how, what, what potentially, the long-term plan is there.
So essentially, two years, nothing will change. I know this. I believe this is in the articles. The art, Chris is going to build, to get together the articles of agreement, whatever. The art, Chris is going to build, to get together the articles of agreement, whatever they are, and put it out to the three towns, the three districts. And after two years?
We don't know.
I don't know. He did say that ironically, as they were getting ready to close up this meeting, that they had the last meeting, someone on the school board, the Vermont State Board of Education said, well, we also need to think about combining districts. So northeast, Wyndham Northeast should go down to Wyndham Southeast.
Yes.
And Dan French said, that's enough, you know, no, we, we've got enough going on with these districts that we're, we're doing. So after two years, it, you know, even in Westminster, they said, we can't, we can't bust those little kids all the way over. You just can't do it. So I, I, there's no, there's no idea anywhere that the schools are going to merge. Just the government.
One question, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, just to add, to pose a scenario, I, I recognize the impact on the board itself, and I recognize the, the tax rate impact, but we are saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, Lynn, there could potentially be no change to the schools themselves.
For two years?
Well, I mean, or longer, or, or, yeah, so long, you know, I just want to decrease the fear factor.
But the only, the only problem is though, there is a fear factor.
Sure. No, certainly, no, I'm clear.
There will be a school board that would not have, would not, would be able to not, you'd have kind of four against two, you know, to say, no, we're not, we're not combining.
And I recognize where the community, I, I recognize where the votes were, and as a board member, I, I am the voice of the vote, so I'm not at all implying an opinion, but I just want to see things clearly.
Now, also, if I remember correctly, we, we would start, if we decided to go with this fiasco, we would, we would start meeting as a board of the, you know, the two, two and two. But until next July, right, we would still stay as a board here?
No.
No.
The transitional board will take over in sixty days.
Oh, okay, so that, so that has changed from previous...
Like I said, you're out of, you're out of business, but...
Yeah, that, that has changed since previously, because we were told...
There are new board members within, I believe the budget needs to be produced within ninety days, and then at town meeting time, your new board would be elected. They probably won't start until July first.
Correct. Right.
So it, that, in other words, December sixteenth, if we were in compliance, we have our meeting, and then Ed and I are part of this transitional board. And the rest of us are booted. And I, and I want to, I want to hear you, Jack, in terms of your idea, and I want to hear the, everyone's thoughts on said idea. But I, before, I felt as though maybe we were putting the, the cart in front of the horse there.
Yeah, I, just, when, sorry, I want to hear you.
I was wanting to know what the state is anticipating we gain from this merger.
That's what I'm hearing from a lot of people too.
At this point, I don't think there's any solid evidence that there'll be any, the only thing they, they're touting is efficiency in the government, but I don't see how, except for Chris and, and me, who go to all the meetings, I don't see how it's going to be any more efficient. Is it for you in your business office?
And that's what, like, you know, Jessa and the, the alternative that was...
That was key pointed about.
Right, yeah.
And you're saying that the cost per student, for us anyhow, is going to go up?
Right.
Isn't that against what they're trying to do?
They're, they're saying...
Are we going to get penalized more?
They're saying that this is your equal opportunity to pay as well as your equal opportunity to receive equal services. The F, Act forty-six does a couple of things. One, it mandates that there be, that there be equality of educational opportunity, for lack of a better word. And that means things like, remember the long discussion we had about things like banned in art and whether it was as good as the, as our community towns? There is the issue of, what they're saying is that whatever you have for a program has to be consistent across it. That has impacts, but it's not really clear what those impacts are. We might set up our schools as magnet schools so that we could maintain some level of differentiation that, that Westminster has these additional programs, and Grafton has their additional programs, like the outdoor education program, which doesn't exist elsewhere in the SU. So there's that. I mean, that, you know, those things have yet to be, be chewed through and worked out. I think that there might be an obligation to have some consistency, whether you round up or round down in terms of those is, will be up to the new board. Traditionally, they round up, but that's, that's speculation, not, that's up to them. Being a single district, however, does do some things. It does, in the, places where this has already happened, and I can talk about Wyndham Central because I've been in a lot of contact with those folks, they're the ones that decided that they, that they would pay attention to the letter of the law and that the buildings would still be open, but it doesn't mean that the same programs have to take place in them. And what they did is this really quite remarkable thing where all the students are consolidated, but they all go to grade six in one town, and they all go to grade five in another town. They all, you know, it's, it's, it's pretty remarkable. I don't think there's any appetite among the folks in Westminster that I know of to do anything but run the two schools concurrently. They had enough trouble deciding to close West West School and didn't really totally do that. It might mean things like if we have only fifty-eight students and they're at higher capacity, there might be some fairly strong recommendations where people could reasonably come to our school building, that they might do so. I'm not sure that that's necess, you know, I don't know that that can be compelled, but that's, again, a school board decision. But, you know, one of the things that's important is, again, sense of equal access for all. We don't, you know, if, if there's twenty-five kids in grade five in Westminster and eight in Grafton, that's not equal education. And I'm not sure who's deprived, but somebody is. And those type of things would have to be looked at pretty hard, I would think. And I think that the people who might be most affected by that are actually not us, it might be the folks in West West. So there, that's how that looks.
Okay. Yes.
There's another thing that I was thinking about. The buses will cost more because it's going to take more gas, but when you have a youngster living next door to a school, is that equal education when another youngster has to be on a bus for forty hours? I mean, forty minutes? That, that doesn't make it equal because the youngster walking from next door has more time to rest and play, where if you're stuck sitting down for another forty minutes per day, that's a lot of sitting time.
We did point out to the, both the A O E and to the State Board of Education, that there is a real negative education effect in terms of the distance you are from a school. And, you know, anything more than twenty minutes, it really starts to show up statistically as a negative impact. And we, we gave them as part of our presentation, both to the State Board and to the A O E, breakouts of time traveled by students in this district, already just to this school.
Yeah.
Because there is things called Houghtonville, there are things, you know, there's places where it takes you while just to get to this school, let alone to anywhere else. And we pointed out that this has always been a large part of the reason why so many kids opt out from going all the way to Rockingham for middle schools, because it's just flat out closer for a large percentage of our students to, in terms of going to Green Mountain or going to Leland and Gray. So, and, and we also pointed out that, you know, we as individual schools still send our kids to middle school in different places and have kind of different arrangements with those places, you know, like Grafton is, hell, it's had, worked out sort of a wink and nod with Leland and Gray, I mean, with, with, with the Green Mountain, that they, that if we send you there for two years, that we're kind of counting on you to educate them for six. And, you know, that's worked out, as far as I'm concerned. The, but, but, you know, all that stuff, notwithstanding, notwithstanding the fact that all that evidence was produced for them, they literally made an off-the-cuff decision, and we don't know what our legal recourse is quite yet.
And it was well done.
Yep.
When it comes to budgeting, and you say there's one budget for three schools, and we all voted at town meeting?
Actually, it'll be Australian ballot.
Or Australian ballot. But how fair is it when you have three times the voters in Westminster compared to Grafton and Athens, so?
You co-mingle the vote.
The fact, you know, one man, one vote, and there'll be a lot more of them than there are...
Exactly. So what they want, they'll get, either way.
Well, if, if there's, we're hoping, I mean, if, if you know Westminster at all, you'll know that if anything, they're, you know, they make us look positively, you know, tough and flinty by comparison, you know. So I, I think there will be politically a real, a real effort to be as accommodating as possible because they don't...
There's still a chance.
But the, if push comes to shove, yes.
Reality, they need to have three times more.
I don't, you know, I, I, I've, I've made these arguments a hundred times, and I completely agree with you. You know, I'm trying to do two things at once. I think this is an unjust, gerrymandered, and profoundly stupid, but I also want to make certain that people aren't panicking or running the hills thinking that, you know, the world's going to come to an end. And I, and I want, you know, as much as I don't like it, as much as I think it's undemocratic, you know, I, I want people to, to proportionize what's going on here.
Now, I did have someone approach me and mention something about a charter school, not that I know much about charter schools. Can we turn our school into either a charter or a private or something of that sort?
Or the reason why the short notice is to make sure that we can't.
So that we can't.
Yeah, that's what I...
So we can't investigate all of it.
They're forcing our hands.
That, that was very much part and parcel of the discussion, is they want to make certain that they could preempt towns' attempts to do that. I saw Charles had his hand on Charles.
So from what I'm hearing, everything I'm hearing steers me to believe that we don't have an awful lot of choice in this matter, and that we need to put our feet down, stand up and say, hey, uh-uh. Am I reading everybody correctly on this?
I think we'll, you know, we'll, we'll go and take a, you know, in a moment, we'll go and take a vote on that, but I just want to make sure that everybody gets their chance to speak first.
What are some of the legalities that would come back on the boards and the towns if we refuse to go to this meeting? We say no.
Big run, no. I mean, that, that's part of the risk, you know, and I, you know, if, if it's not here, I'm asked to act in his capacity as, you know, sort of acting chair, I, I kind of what I'll do. But, and, you know, we've already put some money aside just in case somebody ensues us, but I don't think anybody would, but we might be subject to a court order, but that's, that we'll see. You know, that's just theoretical, I can't, you know...
I think that's a risk we have to take, to be honest, that's in being chairperson, you know, and co-chair with, with Ed on, you know, this one. So it's, yeah, I just think it's one of those risks we have to take as, in my opinion, as Americans and, you know, as citizens of this state.
We, we don't have any standing to authorize our chair and our clerk of our individual boards to do anything. We literally don't have any standing. We can say we, you know, demand you all do this thing, but literally the day that they meet, we're not, we, we don't exist anymore.
Yeah.
From the state's perspective. By doing this, we're, we're calling that into question, if, if that is a choice to not participate. But, you know, that's, as I say, really want to emphasize, that is individual choices, and I really want all the rest of us to respect that.
Yep. Question for Lynn. Is this something where the Athens Board has to make a decision, the Grafton Board has to make a decision, but does also the Af Graft Board have to make that, that same decision? Since we would become nothing anyway?
No.
So it's just the Athens, Grafton boards, right? That's why we have already opened for that?
Just a, a clean point on this. There are two questions to be considered.
Yep.
The question, the question of whether or not we participate in the lawsuit is really the, is the question on which we can vote, and we have to vote, I believe, as individual boards.
Correct.
The question about whether or not you show up or don't show up at this, this prospective consolidate, involuntarily consolidated, you know, the, the new Kim Jong-un school district, that is, that is, that is, you know...
I love it. Thank you, Dave.
That, that is, that is, that is really your call.
Right.
And, and, because we won't, we won't have any, we have no way to compel you, we won't even be there as far as the state's concerned.
But we have one other question, though.
Yes.
Is after we vote on whether or not to go with the lawsuit or not go with the lawsuit, the other question in mind will be, what do we do with the dues for the Vermont School Board Association? Do we hold back those dues, or do we send them in?
Yes, so that is the second question.
And that, that, that will be the second question that we're going to have to answer.
And that also has to be done on an individual board basis. And I, and I will tell you that, you know, I can't prove that Geo Honigford touched up the members of the S V E, and that was what the change was. But if you ask me what my suspicion is, it's a different question entirely. And I do think that actions have consequences, and if the V S B A has done everything they could to ramrod these, to disenfranchise individual boards, to make it clear that you don't even have representation on their board. The fact that the V S B A now for, I think it's six years in a row, has never take, never approved a single initiative, policy initiative from an individual school board over the last six years, as opposed to their policy committee, are all things that would ask you, this money that we give to the V S B A is supposed, is supposed to be dedicated for advocacy. And I would ask, advocacy for what?
Yeah, we're not getting any...
How about for who?
Well, exactly. What is the, are they advocating, who is it advocating for?
Right.
You know, the coincidence, you know, I have to be inflammatory about, about the, you know, the, the, what is it called, the, the Koch Brothers Good Governance Group that seems to have at least four members on the, on the, on the policy committee. Whether that's what's being advocated in our name, then we have a runaway agency, and the one way you control runaway agencies is you cut the money off.
Now, the, the money is what, around seventy grand?
Yes.
That's for the whole...
That's, that's for, that's for the whole...
Two.
Yeah.
Is that, is that the, is that the whole S U, or is that just the...
No, that's the, the whole S U.
Yeah.
So how much are we talking as far as our share of the money? Do you have...
It's all paid by the S U. So the S U's the one that's going to have to pay.
But do we still have to make that, do we as a school board today, tonight, have to make that decision to not pay it?
Well, Rockingham brought that up Monday night at their meeting, and David Clark recommended that it be held off for the time being, until we find out what the State Board of Ed's going to do, and...
Would it help if we had that vote also and...
I'm, I'm not sure it's an individual board decision or the S U, because it's, it's in the S U now.
Chris said that it, the S U pay, it comes out of the S U, but each town has their report.
Each board, I think, has to make a decision.
Okay. We have to individually decide.
Okay.
They did. Okay.
And I would be recommending that the individual boards do...
Take the two votes.
Take two votes, and that they vote the, that the, that the board should be, uh, uh, hold back payment of those dues until further, until with, until further consideration. And define that as you may, and if we're not here, we won't be able to give them the money, will we? So there's that.
All right. Are you folks ready for this?
Well, I just want to say one thing that concerns me, of being a mom and an educator in another district, is also the potential of combining administrations in the form of, you know, our numbers are down, therefore they decide to take away our principal, and we are given some kind of dean of students. I would rather be a full-time principal in the school, if we're keeping the school, and that concerns me, because I've seen that in neighboring districts being mentioned.
It, it was mentioned very specifically by, by two members of the State Board, and we very poitly told them what we thought of that idea. and we very poitly told them what we thought of that idea.
I hate I missed that part.
Yeah, you did. You know, I've been, I've been watching my language sort of tonight, but I didn't watch it quite so much.
You gotta do it Fact TV.
Yes.
Also as a...
I want the FCC to come down on Fact TV.
I, I do have concern as a mother with a preschooler of what's gonna happen to this school by the time my kid has to enter this school.
Well, by the time the kid enters the school, just think, you know, like you said, you know, we're gonna, we may, we may talk about putting something in the budget just to let people know that this is one of the best small schools you'll find anywhere. And if you're a parent and you're, you're thinking, gosh, I could live in Cambridge and spend $2 billion for a garage or I can come up here and buy a really nice house for, you know, under three, which choice would you want to make?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah. If you decide to go that route, what, how do you create a budget? What, what happens with the budgeting if you're not going to merge? Do we still continue on our own budgeting?
See, I would think that we would still have to do our budgeting because everything's gonna be put on hold.
Just keep, keep going on like you normally would.
Yeah. Because if, if there's a lawsuit, then everything's gonna be put on hold, right? Until that is, until it is ruled out.
Well, even this, even the State Board said that it was their expectation in these, you know, forcibly merged districts that the individual towns would happily go along and continue their process and that those would be the basis for the, for the combined budget. Though the, the, you know, the gang of six would be able to make changes if they decided to. But in all practicality, given, you know, end of November, December, nobody's gonna be making a whole lot of changes. One of the things we're trying to, one of the reasons why I've been saying it was urgent for our boards to get these budgets done sooner rather than later was because we face, you know, we face the Grim Reaper by the end of the year.
Um...
Yeah.
No, Lynn, I...
I just keep wanting to let you know, at the Westminster meeting Tuesday night, there were a couple of things. There was a legislate, a legislator there. He just got re-elected. I don't know his name.
Matt Schreiber?
I've seen Nadir Hashim.
Yeah, but then the other, the other gentleman.
A dean or something, something.
Michael...
I can't pronounce his last name.
Murawki.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
So they got up and they said, legislature, we are bringing a bill. We will bring a bill that will stop this, but it takes time.
Yeah.
That's why the lawsuit...
Will buy us that time.
The lawsuit will say, wait a minute, we don't know enough, you know, and the, the words like arbitrary and is this a reasonable? And that would stop this long enough for everybody to rethink and the legislature to try and do their work to redo this.
Okay. So that's great. That's very reassuring.
Injunctions tend to, you know, you can have an injunction on almost anything. You've got to judge that twice a year.
So that would be an immediate kind of thing that they're fighting for and then the legislature would try and redo that bill.
And, and the lawsuit is something that's already in existence that different schools...
Twenty-one of the schools, I think.
So we would piggyback on...
We would piggyback on them. Right. This is a, this is a class action suit with many school boards that are working together.
Now, financing this is important. Financing this is important because again, as was noted, there's, we have limited abilities to finance these things. There is the Alliance of Vermont School Board Members, which will be the titular litigant. And if you go onto AVSBM.org, you will see the letter from David Kelly, who will be presumably the chief litigant, and the notice that was sent to both the AOE and the Board of Education. There is a GoFundMe site. And I can't, as a, you know, I can only tell you as an individual that I'm giving that I really think that affected community members who care about this stuff, if only just because of the, you know, tax differential, if nothing else, really need to look at that. And if you can support that in good conscience, I think you really, really should. These types of things tend to be expensive. They tend to be lengthy. And even with all the pro bono stuff that's being done on our behalf by a bunch of generous people, generous lawyers, there's a contradiction. That, that despite that fact, there is still filing fees. There's all sorts of stuff. There's going to be delays. Just the clerical fees alone will be non-trivial. And people like David Clark have, you know, helped underwrite some of this personally, you know, I'm doing it, David Major is doing it. Please, if, if this means something to you, go on that AVSBM.org and, and pitch in if you possibly could.
Uh, right. So keeping ourselves organized, understanding, may I?
No, no, absolutely. You're, you're, yeah.
Um, board structure, tax rate, and of course, you know, last but certainly not least, the education, the children themselves and how administrators and teachers are impacted. What else, what, I, I want to just make sure we're looking at the full picture of the impact. And then I would also like to learn more. How long has this lawsuit been in process?
We've threatened it for years, but we're actually acting on it in the last, you know, three days.
And I would love to, if it's just based on the threats that, that we've heard, how, how can the students, the schools themselves be negatively impacted based on how we act or, or choose not to act? Right? So I, 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 that's a concern that we need to consider.
It's a legitimate concern. The, you cannot punish a organization or an agency of government or individuals for acting on their right to seek redress in court. It's called, that's called a slap suit and it's bad when companies do it. I'd have no idea how it would go if, if a, if an agency of state government tried to do it.
So Pam's example on the principal thing you used.
Yeah. I mean, we are, I, I, I don't want to give any false assurances, as I said, I, this, this actually happened once, a long, long time ago. The year, before most of us were born, in like, I don't know, the 40s, maybe even 30s, the state tried to forcibly consolidate school districts and they had these big massive, I think they were county-wide districts. And at that time, the rebellion was much noisier than it has been this time and it was much more universal and the litigants won. Actually, wasn't, both, they won in court and then the, and the legislature ran away from the proposal as fast as their little feet could carry them. Whether or not that'll happen here, I don't know because you have to remember that the bulk of the state's population agreed to consolidate sometimes because effectively, you know, you can't tell me where Essex Junction and Essex, one leaves off from the other and it didn't, and it didn't make a whole lot of sense to have separate districts. I know Berry Town and Berry City just went through their own thing just this past week where, again, a town and city came to very different conclusions about whether or not they wanted to merge. I think Rutland Town or Rutland City knew something similar. I can't remember about that one. But, you know, so in, in a lot of places, those consolidations have happened. The stuff that's funny about this is the places that refuse to do it, refuse for reasons like the, like the, this is gigantic SU that runs along almost, you know, half of the northern border with Canada. And it's like 70 miles to go from one end to the other and they merged that. So that, that thing, you know, it's going, it's, you know, it's wider than Rhode Island, is going to be a single school district. So for your $400 a year, you get to drive, you know, two hours to go to get to your meeting. That type of stuff has happened here. The, the towns that voted against this voted against it, we assume, for their own good reasons. The, the, the SVE did say, well, those are just, those leaders in those towns just need to get with the program. The adults in the room need to be adults and listen to us. I, you can imagine my response.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Okay.
Few separate meetings?
I think what we'll do is we will reopen the Athens Board meeting. Jack will reopen the Grafton Board meeting and then when we are done, we will converge again.
Do you want me to start on this?
Why don't you?
Okay. The, yes, the Grafton School District Board is now in session again. We have two proposals before us and I would ask people consider them. We'll, we'll need motions on both of these. I would entertain a motion on the, our allocation of money to the Vermont School Board Association. It's been suggested that if someone wished to, they could propose that we hold back our, our payment to the Vermont School Board Association until, until further, until their position in this is clarified. But I am not going to make that. I'm going to assume that my member board members will, might say something to that effect.
I propose that we hold back.
And I second it.
So given that there are only three of us, we can do, all in favor of this?
Okay.
Aye.
All right. The, the second of these is the, oh gosh, what was it?
The lawsuit.
The lawsuit. Whether or not the, there, there has been a proposed, proposal that the, that the Grafton School Board become a member to the pending litigation being led by the Alliance of Vermont School Board Members to protect the integrity of, of, of school boards that have chosen alternative governance. Again, I would need both a, a motion and a second.
Well, I motion for the Grafton School Board to participate in the lawsuit along with Alliance of Vermont School Board Members.
May I second that?
All right. All in favor of that?
I'm aye.
I will as well. Okay, and I'm going, hm? Well, I was going to get there. Actually, I can't, I'm going to adjourn it, but I'm gonna call recess in case there's something else that comes up. And we'll leave it off to Harold to do his act.
All right. We reopen the Athens School Board meeting. I likewise ask that we have a motion of what your desire is in regards to the lawsuit, to join with the lawsuit, to go that process.
I make a motion we join with the lawsuit and continue with that process.
And I second it.
All right. Motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The second question is that we withhold the funds for the dues of the Vermont School Board Association until such time that we know what they're gonna be doing.
I make that motion.
Second.
All right. So motion been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So both have passed. At that time, we will recess the Athens Board.
Recall back our...
And I will recall now the AFGRF Board. Okay?
Was that helpful, Josh? Did we do that? So it's gonna be...
Is that okay?
Sure. Okay, thank you.
He will fix it anyway, make a little bit, make us know, think we know what we're doing. All right. Next question. Once again, this has to do with the Athens School Building as to whether or not we should winterize the building. I know that there was one, I think it was last year, I can't remember, but I believe it was last year, we did not winterize it only because in March, we were gonna have to open it up and it seemed like the cost, it was not cost-effective to open it up and it was about the same to keep the thing heated and, and so forth. So I don't know what the pleasure of our board is, whether or not we want to winterize the Athens Building or just keep it at 50 degrees and let it go at that. And every once in a while, one of us will check it, make sure that it is doing okay.
I would like to see it done at the 50 degrees so that if the town of Athens needs it for a community space as this building is available for community space, that it can be used.
Okay.
It's also better for the building itself to not be...
Closed up.
Closed up and no heat.
All right. Do you want to, give that as a motion?
I'll give that as a motion.
All right. So Lynn, Lynn makes a motion that we, we do not winterize the Athens School Building, but that we keep it at 50 degrees and maintain it for that so that we can use it for town meeting in March and so forth. And if we need it for anything else, we would be able to do that.
I do have one question.
Yep.
Do we have, what is it? Do we have dehumidifiers in this building? Do we have anything to make sure that, you know, when we turn the temperature way down, that we're not gonna just have a moisture problem?
I don't know. I can't give you a, do you know?
The heating system is on a timer, so at a certain time at night, it shuts down to, I think, 60 degrees.
So it's already down to...
And then it kicks back on, and then it kicks back on at like an hour before school session.
I just want to make sure that we did, you know, invite her to the blackboard to come into the room.
No, that is...
Here, it's already regulated.
Yeah, that, that is very good.
When in doubt, ask somebody in the, you know, clerk department.
That's right. Any other discussion? All right. Lynn has made the motion that we keep it at the lowest level we can, 50 degrees, and maintain it for this winter so we can have it for meetings or any other public use that is needed. Do we have a second to that?
Second.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anybody else? Okay, it has, it has passed. So we will not winterize. We will maintain it for this year. And then we have a letter D to approve the corporate resolution. And Lynn has that for us.
From what I understand, and I'm asking Edie to correct me if I have it wrong, but when Merchants Bank was either bought or absorbed by Community Bank...
They were bought.
Yep.
They were bought. They, the Community Bank did not get a corporate authorization resolution from this entity for our direct deposit checks. And so we need you, as a committee, to vote whether you would like to have the clerk, June Lepiani, sign it.
Pretty good.
Not bad for an amateur.
Do we need to do this as individual town boards or do we need to, or as a joint contract?
This is the AFGRF Board and basically it lets the bank know who is authorized as check signers and who is allowed to borrow on the board's behalf and invest on the board's behalf. And it goes back to Kim and her assistant. And so when we did the ACH forms, that was allowing us to do same-day processing, this tells them who can authorize money changes, which they did not have for this board of Rockingham. They did have it for the other boards, but this just tells them who the board has authorized to be their treasurer and...
Presumably...
Yes.
Yep.
By the way, how does this, here I ask, how is this affected by what's coming down the bank? I mean, if we're not, if we're not, if we're not an entity in, you know, 90 days from now, how's this, how's this sugar off?
Well, because you'll go to one board, one budget, you'll have to have a treasurer, you'll have to have a new federal ID number, a new state ID, not tax number. You're going to have to have a new name. All of those things will fall into place. But currently, we're gonna move forward with Darlene being for Athens, Kim being for Grafton, and the other towns have their treasures. But yes, all of that will change. Um, but yes, all of that will change.
Darlene, the person from Athens? I had a different...
Darlene, yeah.
Darlene Wyman.
Chief of Treasurer, that's why, it looked like you had, it looked like Michelle Dollar.
Oh, no, this is Afgraph, they handle Afgraph as well as Grafton. Darlene only does Athens.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion?
So, you need a res, we need a...
I need a motion?
Motion, you...
To adopt?
To adopt...
This resolution.
Tell me, tell me what the resolution is that would show that...
To approve of the corporate authorization resolution for Athens-Grafton School District.
So, I move that we adopt the corporate authorization resolution, trying to help our, our, our note taker, uh, for Athens-Grafton Contract School District.
Yes.
Uh, with the Community Bank, N A. Is that pretty well cut it?
I think so.
Okay, so, motion been made?
I second it.
It has been seconded, any, any more discussion? Okay, let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, this has given June the authorization to sign this off?
Yes, that, that's important, June has the authorization to sign on her behalf.
And then it will be taken care of, yes.
I think Lynn, Lynn needs to sign.
Lynn needs to sign also?
We need to know their officer. I believe you need to sign where it says secretary.
Yes.
Just on the first, and then Lynn is the left...
And then Lynn, Lynn will have to...
And you'll, and you'll probably need a, the minutes that are part of that vote, because I know that's what it's been asked for.
Yep.
Yeah, I will send that to the bank when I send this, and, um, sorry, just signed right next to her? Yep, and we'll need your signature and the show.
Yeah, you can talk about this.
Oh, awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Well, you can sign it tonight.
But now, on my 12, the show always smells false.
Okay, yeah, she can stop by and sign it, that would be great.
Really good kind of dude.
Yeah.
So, here, I'll go sure, certainly.
Yeah, I think that would be...
Yeah, you have your comments?
Yeah.
These are the ones that you want, so if you want to stick them in the ground colder, so I know who's...
Again, everything, the, the con starts from the final line, the, right, the end of November.
So, thanks.
Thank you.
So, I don't think there's been a date set yet.
Yeah, I, I, this, this meeting will still take place.
Yeah, this one will, I mean, the other one...
Yeah, any meeting after that, but this one will take place.
Yeah, because I don't think there's been one from Westminster, right? Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, I do, I, when we get to the next meeting, I would like to, um, ask, I sent out an email, but I, I sent it to David Major, who's already responded, and to Ed, and Ed did not respond.
Yeah, I think he, well, he had, he has family issues that are going to be sort of chronic for a little while.
So, the question on the email was, uh, we, we would like to get Westminster, Athens, and Grafton together...
Right.
Next Tuesday night.
Okay.
I can't do it Tuesday night.
You can't do it.
What date is that?
The 13th.
Excuse me, I can't.
You can?
13, yeah.
That's the day that we had planned that, we were going to...
My question is, I asked yesterday, will that give us enough time to post it in all the different, the three different towns?
Twenty-four hours is all you need.
I think so, for a, a special meeting, it's 24 hours.
24, 48 hours, so you've got plenty of time.
Sure, well, we'll get it posted first thing in the morning.
Yep.
So, um, but, you have to vote.
Yeah, okay, um, let's go down to the next one. Uh, all the, the warrants have been signed?
Yes.
No discussion on that? Any appointments or resignations? We haven't yet? No, go ahead. Um, directors' comments, Charles?
I have nothing more to add, I'm just hoping that we can see this thing through.
Well, we will.
Yeah.
Same as well.
Same as well, all right. Um, no, I appreciate your, your help tonight, really, um, to help us get through this so far, so, we will, we will do this as a board, all right? June?
Um, and as the clerk, I think it's important for people to also feel free to speak to me, I would love to hear, uh, community, community's opinion and feedback, people know where to find me, um, and my cell phone is 520-784-3422, that's the best way to reach me, or, um, at my WNSU email. And isn't it a, it's a period between your, your first and last name? So, you might want to reiterate, but it's june.lupiani.
I'm reassuring that you also have trouble taking that.
Okay, but also, just before Jack does his directors' comment, um, Liz, would you make sure that you have the list of numbers and addresses and all that stuff, so that if anybody in the community wants it to contact us, they may be able to do that?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jack?
I, I've...
Not sure.
I've been told I have a history of, of, you know, of monopolizing these meetings.
You have a gift for gab, it's okay.
And tonight was probably the worst exception, uh, worst example of all, and I...
I need your help.
Appreciate everybody's preparedness.
I, no, I think it, everybody needs to, I'm glad it was a conversation in a lot of ways, because I for one needed more clarity and needed to hear that talking through this.
That was very...
So, thank you.
Well, that was very kind, and yeah, I was milking for comment. The, the, again, quite seriously, you know, contact us, we are your representatives, this is a, this is a, a trying situation, uh, I hope people will respect the individual decisions that quirks and board members, uh, or board chairs make in this matter, I don't know if Ed will be the guy or if it will be me when the time comes, because Ed me, he may not be available, but if he is, he'll make his decision, I'll make mine. Um, the, uh, the thing that I want people to understand is that I'm in contact with the chair of the, of the Westminster Board on a fairly regular basis, he is one of the co-chairs of the Alliance, uh, as is David Clark, as is David Scholes in Brattleboro. Uh, we do, we are going to try to have your backs and be as responsive to you as we possibly can. Do you understand that to some extent, there's two tracks we have to go through, we have to go through, down a track that says, you know, we want to be responsive to the community, and we also have the track that we want to make certain that the integrity of the school and continuity of education isn't affected, and that means we really want to support our, our, our administrative leadership, because they have to support both us being cantankerous and fighting this, and at the same time, preparing for the possibility that we'll lose badly. So, they're trying to go down two tracks, as they should, and, uh, I think that it's just doubled their workload, and, uh, they have my thanks for all they do.
Okay, there's going to be two meetings next Tuesday, um, a meeting, joint meeting with Westminster, right?
Yes.
Between the Afgraph Board and the Westminster Board.
Yes, a special meeting.
And what time is that, 6:30? At the SU?
Yes, at the SU, if that's okay, it's a larger room and with the group coming. Um, 6:30 special meeting of the three school boards.
Yep.
And it's the 13th, November 13th, at 6:30, thank you.
Yep, got it. The next meeting for this board will be on December 13th at 6:30. Now, are we going to have a budget meeting? Do we need to have a budget?
Yes, we do.
Budget meeting at 5:30 on the 13th of December, and then the regular school board meeting at 6:30 on December 13th. No reason to go for executive session? Okay, agenda items for next meeting?
I think we might want to just have the items that we've discussed tonight about the lawsuit and the SBA still on that.
I'm sure that that will be, that would be put on, okay?
Edie?
Um, now, I don't know if this board, I thought you all did offer the $2,000 retirement.
Did it again.
Do we need to do that, we're going to need to do that tonight, do we, or do we?
No, well, you should put it because it's a money item, it needs to go on the agenda, but, I mean, the 13th, um, it's still doable.
For the 13th of December?
Of December, of December is okay.
Close to the state's special meeting.
Um, yeah, your next meeting, um, it's cutting it close, but, and I don't know if you even have any staff members that are close to, to retirement, but, um, we usually offer, the boards have offered it in the past.
That I know of, right.
That are close.
But Lynn, would you see two detectives on next, the next agenda?
Definitely, yeah.
Yeah, the 2,000 retirement, that way we can budget someone less expensive if we know someone who's got many years of experience and helps us with the budget.
Edie, there's no reason we couldn't just, you know, tuck that into the special meeting if that's a thing, that if it, if it really's going to jam you.
If it's that push, push the shove.
Can you do that, since it's a money item?
Put anything, put any agenda item on, including, you know, our opinion of the last election if we wanted to, so, yeah.
You know, that's a great idea, because Westminster also needs to vote on it.
Okay, so, why don't we, why don't we put it on for next Tuesday, okay?
So, we'll put that on.
For next Tuesday, we'll do it.
Okay.
All right, if there's no other discussion, this meeting is adjourned.